Mr. Drone, you were requested to be heard as a citizen.
Yes, sir. Again, I appreciate what you did.
That's...
What was on your...
Appreciate it.
The only thing I want to admit, talk to you about, and I've talked to a couple of you about it already, is just, I mean, and I'm not looking, I don't care whose fault or, I don't care what's happened in the past, stuff like that. Please just sit down, come up with a plan. Immediate goals, short range goals, mid-range goals, anything, any, whatever needs to be done, because y'all are a better judge of that. Please start executing the plan. I mean, because we've got to get from here to there finally. And this example I gave, if the place chief's here is flogging a guy every morning at eight o'clock just because it seems like fun, well, that's obviously a short term, you've got to stop that right away. But there's other things that you can work out for... And, I know, you stopped doing that. But there's some things, you know, that, hey, I need you to work on this for 60 days, and then we'll come back and visit us, and at the same time you put other stuff in. That's, I mean, that's all, we just got to get going. And we can't spend our way out of issues, so please watch that, and we just got to get going. That's all I had to say. I appreciate you letting me over.
John, you want to go?
Yeah.
Go. I appreciate you coming up here. This is part of our vote.
I understand.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming. Anybody else?
Um, William Gillinger.
You want your now or later, William?
Yeah, I'm going to do it now, get over it. Basically, all I got to say is, you know, I've come up a race game about how things have been done and everything, so I've got something good to say for that. I want to thank our new chief for doing an excellent job. I'm very pleased with the police department now. Y'all are doing great, and all I ask is you keep it up.
Appreciate it.
So, I just wanted to make a good comment instead of a bad one. So, I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, William. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. This meeting's going to be held in strict, as far as if you've got something to say, do it as citizens' comments, and this meeting's going to be conducted, and if I acknowledge you, that's different. But right now, it's just going to be a meeting, council, regular council meeting. So with that, we're going to be going into closed session number two. City generally reserves the right to adjourn to executive session authorized by the state of Texas, code 551.04, to discuss a matter listed below. The city council also reserves the right to consult in closed sessions with the city attorney on any posted agenda pursuit, Texas government code, section 551.071. The, uh, number one, deliberate point. Deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of Public Works Director Dean Carroll, and all matters incident and related here too, Texas government code, section 551.074. Going into closed session.
All right. Page 538. We'll come back into open session, item one, discussing considered necessary actions regarding employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of Public Works Director Dean Carroll, and all matters there, incident related to their fore, Texas government code, section 551.074. Forward, open.
I made a motion that we give Dean a written warning for violating the section 2404 purchase order system. No purchase orders over $100 shall be made in the name of the city by any employee except by the following policies, and that was violated on several counts.
Got that motion by Mr. Cockham?
Oh, second.
And a second by Mr. Foreman? All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, we need discussion?
I think we had it already.
All in favor? All opposed?
Madam.
All right, moving along. Consent items. A, approval of city council minutes, January 12th, 2015, regular meeting, and January 20th, 2015, called meeting. Approval of bills. B, and approval of earned compensatory time. I read over the council minutes. I might go through the three minutes, or two.
I do that consent item for all, A, B, and C.
Well, yeah, I'll do that just, yes, I might go through the consent items. I have a motion by Mr. Richard on consent items. Second?
Second.
Discussion? No discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right. Do you have any more citizens signed up since we've been back?
Did anyone else want to speak? Call.
Couple of things I have is, brought up last meeting, but everyone wasn't here. I mentioned last meeting. Any city employee that works for the city, I feel like, I as a taxpayer, or anyone else that lives in the city, should not be required to pay fuel expenses or anything like that for running around town picking up other employees to Milford or whatever. That's everybody. The munchie, whoever does it. I saw it happen with my own eyes, I don't agree with it. When there's a called meeting, I feel like if there's a called meeting, city council's leaders should be here. I understand you had back problems. I feel for you because I have, I've had back problems. Greg, you were sick. Okay, that happens. The next day, you should maybe take precautions and not have been at the high school games taking score around all the kids if you were so sick. Frankie, if you can spend all day down at the city hall shooting the shit with everybody, then you should be here.
Sir, I'm glad you watched your mouth when I went ahead foul language in the meeting.
All right, so I got it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I didn't sign up, but I'd just like to say, I, I don't know the name of the program, but I saw it on the news tonight, and it's about putting out blue and yellow ribbons in support of your police department, and I think we ought to do that.
Yeah, I think it's Dallas that did it.
Yeah, it started in Dallas, but it's supposed to be like everywhere.
I'm the chief, that's it. I just saw it today. Operation Blue Shield is what it's called. I don't really think I've seen it. We can do it.
But it's just about putting out blue and yellow ribbons, like people put out, or like they wear a little blue and yellow ribbon just to support their police department. And I think we need to support our police department. That's all I have.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Okay. We'll move into six departmental reports and start with the chief of police.
Counsel. For our UCR report of stats for January, we had, your Part 1 crimes include property crimes, burglaries, motor vehicle thefts, et cetera. We didn't have any reported crimes in the month of January. For 2014, we had two for the month of January. Under other crimes, which include assaults, thefts, and all others, we had seven for January this year compared to four of last year. We wrote 407 citations for the month of January compared to 131 of last year. We have written 1,646 since October compared to 776 the previous year. We made 15 arrests in January compared to six of last year. We also made 46 arrests year-to-date compared to 24 of last year. Our top five calls for service are close patrols, business checks, neighborhood checks, special assignments, and meet complaints. And the total calls for service were 376 this year compared to 519 last year, obviously with all the extra arrests that usually cuts down on your calls for service. And just to clarify any misnomers that I've heard, our police department doesn't have bias towards anybody. We don't single out anybody. We don't care whose name is who. We don't care if your name is Guthrie, Richards, Cochran, Farmer, Jackson, Hiles, Kowalski, Cochran, whoever. You're going to get treated the same, no matter what. If you need a ticket, you need a ticket. If you need to go to jail, you need to go to jail. That's it.
Thank you, chief. Thanks, you. All right, Mr. Carroll?
I wanted to just touch bases on the public works budget, and let y'all know where we're standing on it. Because I'm actually kind of proud of it. There's a lot of things saying that the public works is what we're spending, what we're spending, what we're spending. As of today, we have, we're at 57% in our street department, and we're at our halfway mark. We've got six more months to go, so we're right on the money there. Water and sewer, this is what 48% of our money already coming in. Water and sewer, water department is at 28%. We're well below, way below where we should be. Our sewer is at 34.4, and we're way below there too. I just wanted to, you know, some people may think that it doesn't really matter, but it does to me, because I am cutting back everything I can and doing what I can. And those numbers show, if you can come in halfway through the year and only have 28% of your finance to spend, you've done something. And also, I left the agenda packet for y'all on the, on the projects that are at hand right now. Do you want to go through them, or you're just going to look at them and we go back to them, or? Because it's a lot.
It doesn't matter, but I would like to make it accessible to the public.
Sure, sure.
And then, like I said, and anything that you want to address.
Let's do it.
There's a lot of projects.
Yeah, let's do it like this. Harrison Williams project, they had a 90-day contract. With the change orders, they added another 12 days. With the rainy weather, bad weather, and everything else, they got extra 20 days put on. Now, the final date is March 1st. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. They go over March 1st, and we start penalizing. We're going to talk about the CDP G grant for the water station chairman a little bit. It's on the agenda. One of the things I wanted to say about that is, it's $275,000 that the city really needs. It's a grant project that'll keep money from coming out of our pocket. We almost lost it. Deadline came up on us. We almost lost it. We almost didn't get there.
On which one?
The water station. KSA.
It has to be done by 28th.
Yeah. So, I mean, we had to just cut back and make it fit the city, where they were wanting to come up some magical number of a million dollars, and we both went back and said, you're out of your mind. You know, you've got to make it fit us. And they finally did, but we almost lost it. You know, the classes for the guys, we have now where the guys have to have so much education to have a license within a year or two years, depending on when they were hired. I left it in this here too. It also shows which worker, how long they've got to work, how many schools they've got to work, what it costs to send them, and the deadlines. Right now, both of Jeff and Seth have seven and a half months to comply with this, and obviously, they're not, they're not going to be able to go to school anytime soon until we get some people here. Reading C, it's in your packet too. That's real important. Reading C is with the Texas Water Board. They have numbers that we want to look at. It's something that I can't fill out, something that as a whole, everybody needs to fill out. What we project to be at in 20, 30, 40, 50 years. How much water we need. What this does is it leaves us in a borrowing situation with the state at 2% interest. If we don't answer this by the 18th, then they're going to put whatever they want to on it. And/or we may be pushed out the door. So that option matters on down the road. We may not need it for five years, we may not need it for 10 years. But eventually, as the city grows, we want to be able to say, okay, Austin, we put our share in, it's time for us to borrow, I'm going to say $20, whatever it may be. If we're not, we don't have our name in the hat, we don't get it. So that's what this is about. The bar screen at the wastewater plant, we talked about it. It's in your packet too. What it says is, anything under $50,000, we don't have to have sealed bids. But it's also, and I think there's one of the letters back there with it. I prefer a sealed bid. It's up to the council. If y'all want the bids to come in, and y'all look at them, or does it make somebody look at them? I just prefer closed bids.
What reason on that, excuse me, Dean? One reason on that, it said that it would cost us more through KSA if we did the bar screen.
Okay.
I mean, if we did the closed bids.
And that's fine. As long as y'all know, like I said, I'm not going to change my mind on a closed bid. Closed bid is always a better way to go. Now, if it costs more, we don't want to go that route, then we can designate the open bids to come to Terry, one of y'all, or whatever, and y'all can look at it.
I think sealed bids are better, because nobody knows until they open them up at that meeting what those bids are. Nobody can say, well, this person's bid was lower, so that's why they got it. I think the sealed bids are the best way to go, because we've been doing it anyway, sealed bids. Nobody knows what's in those envelopes until it's time to open them up.
The wastewater treatment plant renewal, it's still out there because we don't know what we're going to actually sample in that lagoon, because we want to put that lagoon back on. But it's still out there, and we have 180 days to file it and get it to them. So eventually, though, someone's going to have to pay for that. And I believe KSA's already been in front of y'all, and y'all have already agreed to hire him to do it, so. That 50-horse motor at the wastewater plant went to ground last week. When it did, it took the soft start with it. Soft start's $2,700. That motor rebuilt's $26. So, if that, if something happens to the other side of the plant, and we don't have that fixed yet, then we have a wastewater plant.
Dean, I have a question.
Sure.
Looking at minutes, are you just, when you talk about the bar screen, it looks like the cost is $25,000 and $50,000?
That's what the engineer just threw out there, I think.
Okay. But when we talked back in September, the estimate was going to be $6,000.
Well, we were just going to replace the bottom. And that's before the state said, no, you can't do it, you've got to have an engineer to do it. If I was going to go in there and have jack of tapes on using, or somebody welded a bar screen in, and we have it installed, that's what I was... But the state came back and said, no, you're not going to do it that way. We want plans, we want an engineer to do it, we want them to understand. So they changed it off.
And that's with KSA?
Yes.
And you were talking about earlier doing three bids on that?
As many, I prefer as many as possible. I also prefer, I have to rephrase that. I think it would be better if whoever, whatever contractor sends in this bid can help let us pay this out. If we put this out there, okay, here's the project, but we're going to need help along the way, let them put the sealed bid in, that's going to make a big difference. That way, we can, as the money comes in, we can pay them and not be out going on some. And there's a lot of contractors that will do it, so. Highway 34, the other morning, that 8-inch blew. It flooded 34 again. We still have a major issue. This rain this morning flooded again. Whenever we get together, maybe we can get together and determine whether or not we can put some kind of plan together. The text office is not going to do this. If they're working their hands on it, then I'd just ask some council just to make some kind of decision which way to go. If you say, hey, Dean, it's your responsibility, get up there and do it, then I'll do it. But we've got to come up with some kind of plan with that thing. Also, whenever Jeff fixed the, or the guys fixed the 8-inch down by the water station, did you notice the road dried up?
Yeah.
It's how far the water was pushing up. And we were getting ready to cut that road out.
Oh, so that's what the leak was?
That's where it was. It's pushing all the way from, from, across from the parish body, all the way through, and up there, to the weakest point.
Yeah, I saw that dried up. I wondered.
That's all I have, counsel. Thank you.
Two more questions for Dean? If not, then we'll, we have Don's fire department. Did y'all find it?
Yeah.
And then, Ms. Murdock, if you're in municipal court, and administration.
Number one, simple, I apologize. Citations filed by Italy Police Department were 343. The winning citations filed were 64, and the warrants cleared were 31. Collection letters that were sent out were 114, and the ones issued were 13. And this is for the end of the month, 139. Good news, this month, sales tax for February was 35, 173, 19. It's up 12.86% from the last time this year, from last time, same time this year, last year. And it's up 618 for the calendar year. So that's good news. Hopefully, our sales tax will continue to increase. The travel stop is making a lot of progress. You may have noticed today that they've been, well, the last week, they've been excavating, putting in sand for the buildings. Today, the Old Mary Queen was gone. It's a pile of concrete now, leftover from the slab in the entry, in the drive. The rehabilitation on Miss Bell's house property is proceeding. The contractor started working on her house this last week, and all the required inspections will be done on that prior to completion. We'd like to say congratulations to the Italy Economic Development Corporation. Charles isn't here. The Texas Park and Wildlife Commission has approved the park grant. The site visit was done last week. At this time, we are waiting on the grant agreement. Once we get the grant agreement and it gets executed, they'll be able to move forward. But no activities can be done without that signed grant agreement and the notification to proceed from the Texas Wildlife, Parks and Wildlife. So that's good news for, for the park. Again, I want to let everybody know that May the 9th is election day. The deadline to file an application for a place on the ballot is February the 27th at 5:00. If you'd like to run for a place on the ballot, you'd come by city hall and pick up your application. Also, the ballot will be to reauthorize the local sales and use tax at the rate of 1/4 and 1% to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair municipal streets. And that goes for streets that, it will not go to put in a new street, but it will go to repair the existing streets that were here at the time of the election. The last day to register to vote is March the 10th. If you need to get your, contact the registrar's office, or you can come by city hall. We usually have some form, a little form that you fill out for the, to register to vote. And then, we continue to keep working on the upgrade of the website. And once we get a little farther along, we'll be able to post a lot of different things, the agendas, the financials. There'll be a lot of things that we'll be posting on the, on the website.
Mayor Pro. I did forget one thing, though. I think it's for the public to know. Whenever Love ran over that 10-inch water line, and it blew and lost so much water, we did, I gave y'all an invoice for y'all to approve. It's like $3,700, something like that. So we did invoice out for that, for them damaging the water and water line and the water we lost. So, I haven't mailed it or anything, because I was waiting for some kind of instruction from y'all.
Any more questions, Bruce? Ms. Murdock?
Not for Ms. Murdock, but maybe for Dean. Of course, we can't take action on it because of, it's not on the agenda. But how would you handle any invoice?
In the past?
Yeah.
Generally, I get it together. I run it by Terry. We look at it, and we send it. The only reason that this is even, the only reason that this hasn't already been sent off is because they're a new company that just came into town. A lot of times, a lot of cities are waiting for that. That's not my decision to make on that part, that's the council's decision. We take, put the invoice together, Terry and I get it together, and we send it off. This is a new company that just came into, some council members may have a different opinion about billing them, so that's why I brought your attention.
While we try to put that on the next month's agenda, we're going to let out.
Some cities will, I mean, a new company can...
I know, I mean, like I said, I can't speak for any of the rest of them, so, I mean, if that's the case, then we probably...
That's the only reason why I did go ahead and mail it.
Yeah, I mean...
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move number seven, regular session, and Adam H., who will hear from Mr. Culpepper in reference to the 2013-14 fiscal year.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Culpepper, and I'm excited to be here again with you this year to present the audit. And unfortunately, we couldn't make it last week, but we'll look at it on everything tonight. Does everybody have a copy of the audit report with them, so we can refer to pages? Okay. First page that we are going to look at is page 12. And this is our balance sheet for all governmental funds. And if you'll just direct your attention to the far right-hand column, it's total governmental funds. We have total cash of $845,000 compared to $975,000 from the prior year, so cash has gone a little bit for governmental funds. Total assets of $1,555,000 compared to $1.1 million from the prior year. So overall, assets are down, it's just used to, number of trillions of cash being used. Continuing on down the page, total liabilities of $174,000 compared to $280,000 from the prior year. So our liabilities are down, which is good, we've been paying our bills. Coming down to total fund balances, $836,000 compared to $889,000 from the prior year. And on fund balance, I know something that's been of interest is the number of days for unreserved fund balance. Our number of days available is 49 days for this year. Last year, it was 90 days. Two years ago, it was 106, and three years ago, it was 66. So it kind of has seen some fluctuation. It was low in 2011, picked up in '12, stayed pretty consistent in '13, and now has gone down in '14. So just to kind of give comparative. And that's just kind of telling you if, if your income stock coming in, kind of what you've got out there that would cover your operations from a number of days perspective.
And on that, I know we asked you last, last time we tried to have a meeting, what was, what do you think that the problem is with bringing us from that 90-day to a 49-day?
It's all triggered upon what basically your bottom line is from the general fund. So if your revenues are down and your expenses are up, you're going to have a little bit of, you know, more of a loss from one year to the next. So it's truly indicative of if your revenues are coming in where you expect them, if your expenses are coming in where you expect them. So it's just kind of staying on top of your expenditures, making sure we're not going over, and then just kind of keeping a close eye on our revenues. And if we're down on our revenues, why are we down? You know, and kind of see what's going on.
So, yeah, I kind of understand how you figure it, but I'm saying how come we went from a 90-days to a 40-days? It's either got to be we've spent too much money, or we didn't get enough in. Or maybe it was both, or something.
It's both. Your revenues are down this year, and your expenses are up. So it's a combination of both. And where the revenues are down, if you'll turn to page 13, this is our profit and loss basically for our governmental funds, and we'll just look at the general column. Total revenues of $957,000 compared to $1,020,000 last year. And the main difference is in your fines and forfeitures. It was down 20% from last year to this year. So from a revenue standpoint, everything was relatively consistent with the exception of fines and forfeitures. That was where the decline came in.
Missing him, and I was looking through this book, and I didn't find it, but I also wanted to kind of, and I've talked to Terry about this a little bit. But we have our debt, our debt and sewer, debt that we, the citizens pay. Right now, we're a year behind on that, as far as like transferring it over. Would that affect us as well?
That would not affect you, it's more of a cash position, of where your cash would be low, that you wouldn't have that cash available to use, so.
So like right now, and this is where I'm trying to figure this out in this, because right now, we're still using that money as it comes in, as like our own personal loan, to kind of keep the city afloat.
Right.
Eventually, what's going to... Eventually, what's going to happen is we're not going to be able to pay one of those bills.
Right.
Would that affect our forty-five day standing?
It's not going to affect your forty-five day standing because this is truly what is, what general fund is entitled to. It's, it's portion of any revenues and expenses that are associated with that specific fund. What you're referring to is if cash is low in one fund and it's higher in another fund, we're using that cash over here to offset the deficit cash in this portion. So it's not going to impact the days and fund balance and our profit and loss. It's just going to impact where you have cash available and how you can use that cash.
But, but wouldn't it affect us overall because we are using it kind of like a loan? Because this money that's coming in should have been transferred over to, to our debt account. But we're using it for general funds and other, other things that are coming in. So in actuality, our general funds isn't as high as it, it is.
Well, but that, it's still, if, if it's being used for general fund activities, it's still something that general fund would have to pay for no matter where the cash was.
Right.
So it's still an expense of the general fund if it's something that was incurred by the general fund. If it got paid out of water, the general didn't have the money, general still has that expense. They just owe water now for that money they borrowed.
Right.
So it's still, no matter where the cash kind of came from, it's still, if that expense was a general fund expense, it is being notated in this column.
Okay. So right now, we probably won't see a difference, but when it comes to the time where we have to pay one of those bills and then we have to transfer all that money over, that's when.
Yeah, it's going to swing your cash.
And it's going to hurt pretty bad. Okay, gotcha.
So hang on a second. You're saying that when I pay my water bill and the rest of us pay our water bill, the money that's supposed to be going for the debt services is not going to debt services? A portion of it is, but not all of it.
You set aside, right?
Currently, it is currently.
Current, current, now, last physical year.
But I thought there was supposed to be a separate account that when we pay into that debt services, it meant into the debt services directly and not, not being co-mangled with the rest of the money.
Yeah, so, so like you have debt services here listed. In actuality, we should have more money in there than, than what is listed.
Are you talking about from a cash perspective?
From a cash perspective, we're supposed to. We have all last physical year that has not been transferred over yet?
It's not the whole physical year.
I just, I asked you that the other day and you said it was the last physical year.
I said there was.
Why does your stories keep changing, Terry?
Because you don't.
Because I don't listen. Obviously, you're not telling me the truth. So last year, from my understanding and from what I was told, the last physical year has not been transferred over. Currently, right now, we're current in this physical year, but last physical year, it hasn't transferred over. So that should change our number, correct?
Well, let's look at, okay, on page twelve, under the middle column, debt service. Okay, we've got two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in debt service cash as of the end of the year. There's twenty-four thousand unreceivable to be collected from property taxes. And if you keep going down, you've got to do two other funds where debt service owes other funds five thousand dollars. And then you've got deferred property tax revenues of twenty-three, just to kind of go over the column for debt service. So right now, based on what I came across, debt service owes another fund twenty-five thousand dollars. So debt service owes to somebody. Now, if you turn the page on page thirteen, which is income and expense, debt service, you can see the revenue's two hundred and ninety-four. Keep going down, middle of the page, expenses is seventy-five. Keep going down, a transfer out of a hundred and eighty thousand. So debt service transferred a hundred and eighty thousand to another fund.
Right.
So something was going on that was correct and going to the right places. Now, I, I can't sit up here and say, yes, it happened for twelve months because I just don't have that information in front of me right now.
Well, and I guess the answer that I'm trying to, trying to find out with this is because kind of where we're at with, with the payments. We, we're current on our payments, but we're not current on our transfers. Okay, so if we're not current on our transfers, it should, if we were current, our money should be higher than what it's showing here. But we are current on our payments, but we're just not current on our transfers. So if we were current, our money should be a lot higher. Because right now, we're using the excess money that's in that account to make those payments. So we're fine right now. I'm just trying to figure out why we're lower than what we should be. Because we, we actually have more money that needs to go in that account. You see what I'm saying? We have a whole.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I just don't have the information in front of me to, to speak to that, you know? So it's nothing I can do to me, but I just don't have the information readily.
Are the bond payments consistent?
Yes.
Yes, right now, we're, we're current, up to date on that.
You pay your water bill, Becky, Becky separates all that. So it's, 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 it will be paid because when the money comes in right here, Becky separates all that. And it's, and it's set aside, and that's what you call a wash.
Most of the time, it's, we do set that aside, but when we have to transfer for credit card payments, last year, we fell behind because we didn't have a cash flow.
Right.
But it wasn't all year. We did do some transfers.
Yeah.
It just wasn't all of them.
Okay, so, okay, and that, that helps me with that, that principal or the, the debt. How many, how many months are we behind?
I couldn't tell you about this minute.
Okay. Okay, so that would answer my question. It should be more money for me.
Now, in one of the bonds, this split paid out of water and debt service. So that is a factor that, you know, depending on, it's, it's getting a payment out to you. But it's an impact on just not that the tire and bond payment comes from one or the other. It is a split where some of it's coming from property tax revenue from debt service fund and some of it's coming from customer, you know, that amount that's coming from the bills, so.
I just, I don't necessarily like it that if we have, that we're getting, and this is not directed at you, I know. But if, you know, we're getting in debt services money for, that we've put to the citizens that says that we're going to float this bond. And so let's say that, I think it's thirty-eight dollars is what we have on there right now. I think I looked at it. So maybe thirty dollars of it's going to the bond and eight of it is going into our general operating fund. And I just made up that number, but it might not be too far off. Instead of taking that eight dollars and paying off the bond the way we promised the citizens, we're taking, we're using a portion of it for our operating.
But you're saying operations from a water and sewer perspective?
I'm saying that what our.
Overall, in any line.
Well, yeah, our debt services that we, that everybody has on their water bill that says that we are paying off this bond with is not going towards the bond. A portion of it is, and we're making our payments, but it's in excess. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, like just thinking about that scenario, if you're saying like thirty-eight dollars is supposed to go for bond, but only thirty is going for bond.
Right.
If that other eight dollars is being used for operations on the water and sewer fund, then I would say you've got a problem with your existing rates. Rates need to go up to be able to cover your operations. If we can't cover operations on the water and sewer side from our rates, then we've got a problem.
Yeah, but I don't know if they're going, if they're going to that.
Right, but just speaking to that nature, if, if that's the case, then you'll really need to look at your rates and see if there's a problem from that perspective. Now, if it's being transferred over to fund, general fund stuff, it's another issue, but.
Right. And, and that's what's happening right now. And that's what I was trying to figure out is should we have more money in this account? Because we should. But by the right, we should have a lot more money. We're kind of acting like our own bank and loaning that money.
And I will say, that's not uncommon for cities, you know? That it's normal for there to be more funds in one place rather than there might be a timing difference where we have to use some and then pay it back. Now, if it's something that continues to be a problem, then that's more of an issue. You know, if you're just kind of planning to float for a thirty-day type of thing, that's one thing. But if it's a continual existing issue.
And that's my concern. And that's why I was asking, asking you if that would be a problem, if that would float our days down below. Because I know eventually what's going to happen is we're going to, it's going to come where we have to make a payment on one of them and we're not going to have the money. So that's kind of where I wanted to go with it to see if that's going to play, play a factor.
Yeah, not so much on the days. It's just going to be, it's going to hit you on the cash whenever the cash ranks out.
No, Becky keeps up that real good.
But I just, but she just said that if that's not, does not happen in certain.
That's not what I said, and much of it were.
Well, that's not, now, that's not what she said at all. She said specifically that, that they take it out, but if they come in as credit card payments, that they hadn't been taken out. Then the money has not been split and.
It's not being transferred.
Yes, and there were some cases last year that, that, there were several cases that that didn't happen. But I do still have all the documentation. And when our sales tax and our, our, our increase, our income increases, then we can transfer that money back to the certain accounts that it goes to.
So like you said, we're giving ourselves a little love to, to float it. Okay.
Let's move on to page fifteen. We'll switch to utility fund, water and sewer fund. Total assets, five hundred and eighty-three thousand compared to nine hundred and twenty-five thousand from our prior year. And what's happened on that is we've just been putting improvements in. Cash has been used for the improvements that have been going in, which have then increased our capital assets. Because our capital assets have increased while the current assets have decreased. So it's just using our funds to put in the improvements. Total liabilities, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand for this year, six hundred and forty-five thousand for last year. Total unrestricted net position, three sixty-two compared to three oh-two last year. So this fund has seen an improvement in its unrestricted net position. Turn the page to page sixteen. Income and expenses. Total revenues, one point one this year, one point one last year. So right in line, a difference of three thousand dollars, very comparable to prior year. Total operating expenses this year, one million, one eighty-six. Last year, one million, two oh-three. So our expenses are down a little bit. Total non-operating revenues or expenses, we had expenses of two twelve compared to two eighteen last year. Total change in net position, a negative eighty-nine thousand compared to a negative one oh-one last year. So utility fund has ran pretty consistent to, from this year to last year. It's been pretty much, it's been running right in line with what had happened in prior year. Any questions on that? Turn the page to page seventeen. This is our statement of cash flows. Kind of shows how our cash has been used from a water and sewer fund perspective. Total is net cash provided or used by operations, three hundred and forty-nine thousand positive. We always want that to be positive because that's indicative. If it's negative, it's an indicative problem that something's wrong with our rates. So this is looking like our rates are good because we're running positive on this. So we should be covering our operational expenses. Net cash, we'll go back to the middle of the page. Net cash provided or used by capital-related financing activities, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand. That's just principal being paid on debt, interest paid on debt, improvements being put into the system. Net increase or decrease in cash and cash equivalents, negative three hundred and thirty-one thousand, which puts us at total cash of four hundred and twenty thousand. Again, the decline is just using the money that was come forth from bonds for improvements to be put into the system. So there's no problems there. Any questions on that one? Okay, we'll go all the way back, page forty. This is our budget versus actual. It's got the general fund and the EDC. We'll just focus on general fund, I know that's the one that's of more interest. The print's kind of small, just trying to do it on the one page. So for general funds, budgeted revenues were just over a million. Our actual revenues were nine fifty-eight. So we were under budget by fifty-two thousand on our revenue side from the general fund. And you can see, looking down about the middle of the page, there's a negative sixty-four, four eighty-four. That's the biggest decline or biggest difference from what didn't hit budget. And again, it goes back to fines and forfeitures, kind of what we had talked about earlier. About three-quarters of the page down, total expenditures, our budget was one million and forty-four thousand. Actual was one million and seventy-nine thousand. So our expenses were greater than what we had budgeted to be, about thirty-five thousand dollars. So our revenues were down by fifty-two. Our expenses were up by thirty-five. So that puts us at not reaching budget by about eighty-eight thousand dollars. Put the two of them together. On the expense side, the biggest problem when it came to budget is going to be under administration, which was pure legal, legal fees being higher. It was consequence to be over budget. So big categories were fines and forfeitures were not where they needed to be from a budget perspective. And then our legal expenses were higher than what we had budgeted to be. Kind of the two biggest components of budget not hitting what it needed to. Any questions? The last page we'll go over is page forty-two. Budget and actual for the water and sewer. Budgeted revenues of one point one four-three, actual one point one twelve. So we were under budget by about thirty thousand on the water and sewer side. Expenses, our budget was seven eighty-three, our actual was seven eighty-nine. So we were pretty close to coming into budget on the expense side. Just a little bit over. The two together puts us at thirty-six thousand under our budget from an operational standpoint. We won't worry about the interest in bond stuff just from an operational standpoint, but thirty-six is. Any questions on numbers? We're going to go over the internal control stuff, the annuals on the, the annual side of it. Okay, there should be two stapled pages in the back of your packet. We're going to go over the one that, it doesn't have a date at the top. It just starts, it has the number one on it. It says preparation of financial statements. I don't know what order they ended up in. I think it was the first sheet at the back, so. This is just kind of the things that I came across that really needed to maybe see some improvements and recommendations. The first one, and just like I say every year on this one, it's, it's a generic thing for cities of your size. It's just saying that I was requested to prepare the financial statements and document all the note disclosures. No harm, no foul in that. I just have to say that y'all are aware that I'm, I'm doing that, so. Okay, on page two, items of interest, the water deposit report. Right now, after a deposit has been applied, it's still staying on that, the water deposit report. So we don't have a good listing of water deposits or if somebody's inactive or whatever the case is. I know Becky's been working for several years on this. We just need to get a good listing of what would be true active accounts with deposits on file, where the deposit is still an active deposit. Right now, the report runs and there's things on there that are old. And it's a problem with the system that she's working with the provider on that to get an accurate report. But it still causes some issues on the reports that rang from our perspective.
Was, was this issue on here from last year as well?
Yes.
Terry, what can we do to rectify that new system or new software?
Like I told her, Becky has been working on that. While then Becky, Becky will go to Wanda and make sure, and double check the, on the income side and see if it's been spent or if it has been returned or, you know, where it's at and double check and make sure we haven't sent a refund check. But it takes a little bit of research to get those things done and then she can take them off the system. And I do know that she has been, she has taken several off this year in trying to get those finalized and get our numbers correct on that. Part of the issue that it got on there is when they initially started into QuickBooks. The person that was prior to Becky, which I couldn't tell you who it is, might not have been keeping up with it as well as what Becky does. But she wants to make sure that, you know, it shows on there that it must have been done. We had deposits sitting on the books that were five dollars. So they've been on there for a while.
If you were to give a ballpark, maybe even give yourself a little bit of the time, because I'm going back to what John Droll said as far as getting some planning and stuff. How long do you think it would take to rectify this?
I'm hoping with work through RBS that we'll get that fixed this year.
So eight months?
It's a long time.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I. Please go and put a, a number on it to.
It's hard to say because we don't know what difficulties we're going to have and what the problem is through RBS. If there's, you know, if there's a procedure that they're going to do or.
Some of them are dead.
Right.
And you don't know who to send the deposit to.
Right, but you can clear it off the, you can clear it off the books. I mean, there'll still be a liability unless, you know, until, until they can regain the money.
Well, on, on the accounts receivable, number two relates to the accounts receivable. What's happened is if a customer deposit was applied to. What's happened is if a customer deposit was applied to an account and it still left a small balance or something on the account, that's running on the AR ledger, which is just kind of getting that bogged down with people that don't have active accounts. I know that Terry had mentioned that a lot of times people will come back in and apply for something and so then y'all can attempt to collect from them from a prior, um, problem, which I understand. It's just that if something's been sitting out there for so many days, it's just kind of what battle do you want to do? You know, I would recommend if something's been sitting out there for a prolonged period, write it off and move on down the road. But if there is potential to collect, then I see that side of it too.
We have had numerous cases where we have got to collect on those and they have been there for a couple of years. And the outstanding balances, you know, have to be paid in full before, with the deposit, before we can open, set up their account. And in most cases, they take care of it. But they don't, you know, so they get their refund and it applies to their, their payment and then they still owe that thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents or whatever. They just, they just.
Walk away from it.
Don't, yeah, they just don't worry about it. And even though we send them bills, but at some point those will, you know, not be deliverable for whatever reason they moved again or whatever, but we'll hold it because we've had a lot of people return them and it's back to them.
I get a bill every month, I'd say something, I get a bill every month for like fifty-eight dollars from like four years ago, or no, it's probably been a lot like six years ago. That was my dad's, it's not even mine, but it's Carl Cash, because I'm Carl Cash.
No, in that case, we need to.
He's passed, so. And that's something I need to pay, or y'all going to go after him for that?
I think we could probably write it off, but just, probably just need to bring it to their attention.
It's things like that, you know, there's just things that are sitting there, we can probably clean up a little bit and.
Keep me from asking after every number, one through four, um, or one through three, were these items on there last year, all these items?
Number one carries, it's the same type of thing. Um, number two, I came across in testing this year. Number three was there last year. So number two came on this year.
Okay.
Not to say that it wasn't there last year, it just surfaced in some testing that I did this year.
Right.
When I came across, because I do random selections.
Sure.
And, you know, random samples and things, and so things kind of pop out, you know, each year, different things. Now, number three, I know that Terry and Wanda have been working on this for a few years, outstanding checks and deposits. You're not supposed to, after stuff gets three years old, if you've written a check to a vendor and it never has cleared and that she's been outstanding for three years, the state law is pretty much that you turn it over to the state. But you have to go through a series of steps to make sure that you've explored every avenue to try to contact this vendor and so on and so forth. So it's a very long process to get that stuff turned over. And I know they've been working extensively on getting that stuff resolved, so.
They've been trying to find out if it's a duplicate entry or a duplicate, you know, because that has happened before, so.
So it's just that when you do a bank reconciliation, there's a section that shows uncleared items and we've got some things that date back a few years. And so the recommendation is just to research these items and see are they legitimate? Were they duplication? Do we owe money to the state because this person, this vendor can't do it? You know, maybe the vendor got paid off and this was a duplicate check that just needs to be corrected from the system. So it's just a process of going through all these items and determining what's the proper treatment that we need to handle on that. Number four, the cash first month test. I do a selection, um, and pick so many checks and we go through and look to see, does the check agree to the invoice? Does the vendor look right, are the check signers, actual signers on the account, is it being coded correctly, solved and so forth? There was one item that I came across this year and it was in regards to the step grant and, um, officers being compensated for that. And they were being compensated as contract labor as opposed to payroll. And my understanding is that this has since been corrected. Number five, capitalization policy. City just really needs to make an agenda item, come forth and adopt a capitalization policy that anything over a set dollar amount with a life expectancy of one year or more, that we're going to determine that it's a capitalized set and we're going to capitalize. And we're pretty much practicing that with a world policy of five thousand dollars. We just need to physically have something that goes before council gets approved that we can say this is.
So we recommend one at a thousand dollars?
Yeah, a thousand dollars. Value of a thousand dollars with the life expectancy of one year or greater.
Can we get that on the, over the next agenda? So we can have that, thank you Terry.
And then number six, payroll policies, I think most of these have been simply handled. Two, we ran into some issues where there was some clock time and vacation time that was being maintained on some individuals and there wasn't documentation in the file or it didn't agree with what the policy read and, um, so it's just a matter of either change the policy to what it needed to be or make sure that there's proper documentation in any file. If there's an exception as to why an individual would get more than what the policy said and if I'm actually incorrect, that's been working, a working process that's being addressed as well, so.
Was that on, was that on there, last year as well?
No. And those were, that's pretty much all the items that I wanted to go over. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them or there's anything that comes up after the fact and if I'm called or emailed away.
I don't have any questions, Nick, pretend.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you very much.
Steven, you have anything?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, Kofa, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before we move on to AM, we'll take a brief recess.
Let's see your agenda. How am I? We already had a closed session?
No, I mean, I have been interacting with.
All right, let's get this thing rolling. Back into regular session, um, I discuss consider necessary actions regarding the city of Italy to pay, or additional, uh, planning elements with local funds for the Texas CDVG, uh, planning grant.
Joy Ross is here with public management. What we're doing is going, um, requiring for a grant, for a planning grant, for, um, infrastructure mapping, generally all those types of things. And, um, this is to approve that, um, if you will explain to them on that matching amount.
Okay, so, uh, this first item is to, um, allow for the city to provide additional, um, local funds for planning grants. So, uh, the planning grant is going to be, we're going to apply for forty-nine thousand dollars and some change, um, for the grant funds. In order to, um, to get this grant, you have to have a match amount of ten percent, so forty-nine hundred dollars. Well, um, these planning applications are scored on the point spaces and if you are, um, interested in including additional elements to the planning grant, uh, then you can, um, go ahead and commit city funds to doing this. So in our application, there are nine, um, gr- nine elements. City streets, base mapping, water improvements, so on and so forth. Um, nine elements that would be paid for by the grant. And then there are three additional elements that, um, the city will pay for with the matching funds and with, um, this additional, um, money that we're looking at. The matching funds would be in the amount of eighty-six hundred dollars and some change. I'm being leaded up to one. Um, but this first item is to approve, um, using those additional funds. Any questions about that?
Can you hear the, the grant writer for me?
Yes, I'm with public management.
Okay.
Um, we've, uh, done some grants for you before in the Texas, uh, CDVG program. We have not done planning grant yet. The planning would be very, um, beneficial for, uh, just locate or identifying issues throughout the city that, um, you can, uh, that you can plan for in the future.
I'm all for it, I mean, if we can get forty-nine thousand for, for ten percent of that, imagine.
Well, I think, do we want to go with the ten percent or go with the, the higher, the higher amount to get the extra points?
Right, um, so, so, so the eighty, um, eighty-six hundred dollars.
Eighty-six eighty?
Will get us more points and a better chance of getting the, the grant.
Correct.
And, uh, like you said, yeah.
Correct, and these can be pretty competitive, um, so, you know, the more points you, you get, the better, the more likely it is that you'll get funded, um, so.
Okay.
Um, so you'll be pu- you'll be, the city would be putting up roughly an additional thirty-five hundred dollars in, uh, beyond what they would have to in order to apply. And those things are okay for, um, uh, the three additional elements. I think those additional elements are, uh.
Give me the second page, that information, please. Those other elements, you see in the next to the last column, the elements that we would be, um.
The grant funds would put, would, uh, the grant funds would pay for everything except for a thoroughfare study, a zoning ordinance, and a subdivision regulation. So that's what the city would be paying for, study your thoroughfares, um. And then you would also apply some funds to a water study distribution and supply wastewater study and, um, uh, the, uh, base mapping, which the three start. Um, plan or, uh, mapping the city.
Hey Terry, I've got a question for you on this. What, what line item would that come out of on our PNA?
Once it got funded, it wouldn't be in for next year. So we have to expend these dollars, we would add back to the lineup, to add it as a line item on our.
Next year's budget, yeah.
We just have to commit, so we're not giving up any money right now.
No, no, and this is approved first. This is an application as well, so this just allows you to apply.
So we'll just add a line item for that?
Yes. If we receive the grant.
If we did it, correct.
Make a motion that, uh, we approve item I.
Have a motion by Mr. Kaufman to approve item I.
And a second.
And a second by Mr. Jackson, any further discussion? All in favor? And none of the folks, carries? Okay, well, this is.
J and K are.
Yeah, um, I guess let's go ahead and you care for what you put, J and K, you guys got any issues? Let's go ahead to, uh, J and K, uh, both of them. I see J is discussing necessary, uh, necessary actions regarding the approval of resolution R two fifteen zero two zero nine dash one, the resolution city of Italy, uh, Texas authorizing the submission of the Texas Community Development Block Grant, uh, application, uh, to the Texas Department of Agriculture, uh, for the Planning Capacity Building Fund and authorizing the mayor to act, uh, as the city's executive, uh, executive official and authorize representative in all matters pertaining to the city's, uh, participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. And K is to discuss consider necessary actions regarding resolution twenty fifteen oh two, oh nine dash oh two, resolution, the city of Italy authorizing submission, uh, of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture, uh, Community Development Fund, authorizing the mayor to act as the city's executive author and authorizing a representative, uh, in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Texas Community Block Grant Program. I get a motion on J and K. So are the resolutions?
So.
Okay, I have, uh, first by Paul and a second by, uh, Mr. Richards. All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor? Okay, J and K resolutions pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get these to you, Joy. Okay, uh, discuss consider necessary, this is L, uh, necessary actions regarding the review of the twenty-sixteen Regency Water Plan for the city of Italy.
We went over this a little bit earlier. In order to move forward on any kind of, uh, loans or anything, we need to go ahead and step forward and make a commitment with Regency and return it to the Texas Water Board. Uh, in this packet, uh, we're wanting to know, uh, twenty twenty, twenty thirty, twenty fifty, where we want to be with population, where we want to be with water. Jimmy's here and I used a lot of his numbers off of the Waukesha line and the water that was coming this direction. Now, I haven't made any commitments or anything to any of that, because it's really y'all's decision to do. If you want, I guess Paul and I can sit down or whoever and kind of hammer this out. A lot of the numbers that, that Jimmy put in effect years ago are still there. The Waukesha line coming this way, what year would be finished and all the above. So, uh, it's just up to y'all, which way you want to go with it. So, it's just up to y'all, which way you want to go with it.
They'll say on here being that the population and demand values are previously sent for approval, and I don't remember receiving, it says summer of twenty thirteen, so I don't even remember that, and had been finalized, approved by the TWDB, and they don't have the ability to change those at that point.
That's okay. As long as we make sure the amounts of the water that we need for the future, and then any possible grant loans that we may get from Texas Water Board in the future, we're just going to make sure those numbers kind of match the twenty thirty four and fifty. And all it does is just sit down and, and we just go over what we hear, what we're, what we're doing right now, and what the projections may be, how much water we may need in twenty twenty or twenty thirty, and where's that water going to come from?
Are we, excuse me, are we still paying twenty, is it twenty, we still paying them? Or what?
And that's just to have the capability to stay in?
Or you, you want to keep your foot in the door.
Right. In case we ever do want to go above ground or surface water.
Right.
So what would be the, is there a dollar amount that we have to contribute?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
The only time you contribute any kind of dollar amount is if you actually go through the procedure and get the loan, or get a grant loan, whatever it may be at that time.
And that's, that's the twenty-seven thousand dollar matching grant?
No, it actually, no, 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 that's, that's one we just did. That's one we just did. This is, this is something that they look way out, they're looking, you know, twenty twenty, twenty thirty, twenty fifty.
Future water.
The future water. Like I said, a lot of the numbers that are there right now is what Jimmy put in place years ago. Some of them could be updated, the, the water line either from Waukesha or from Aquila?
Is that right?
Aquila. Either one, we need to make a commitment to say, you know, it might be Waukesha or Aquila later on, and they don't have it in here. And how much would that cost? We, we projected ten, ten million, thirteen million to get one from Waukesha to here?
And we need the right way.
And, and twenty, in twenty fifty, we may need it. Or another twenty years from now, we may need it. But if we don't, if we don't go ahead and put our foot in the door and put everything out there, then, you know...
Do I have a motion on L?
Not for a motion.
Recording to review, is it?
Do we have to have it in, in a motion? Or do you just, just continue?
This will just, need to continue. I just want to put a, a motion to continue to, to put that avenue.
Well, who's going to put it in? And it's due the eighteenth. So I need to move forward on it pretty quick.
So, you, did you make, you made a motion?
I made a motion that we'd continue.
I'll second it, we'll go ahead and, like I said, move forward, because it is an action motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Jackson and a second by Mr. Cochran, any discussion? All in favor? Carries nans? Alright, next line item is going to be M, discuss considering necessary regarding the use of the Teltrac GPS system on public works vehicles and the city car.
I put that on. Talked about this last week, but I want to discuss it a little further. I actually talked to Dean last Thursday, and I think it kind of works both ways. It'll be an advocate for Dean. If we get citizens saying, hey, this isn't being done, or if they're not doing this, we can pull it up and kind of show you guys where, where they've been. On the other hand, I think it's going to help us on the accountability piece. So it'll, it'll see, you'll see productivity and things go up in the country. That's kind of why I wanted to discuss why I decided to put that on. The cost, it is a thirty-six month subscription. It looks like it's going to be twenty-three hundred and seventy-six dollars a year. I know we're not, you know, we're watching money where we're spending it, but I promise you guys, with this, we're going to get our full return on investment. I, I know for a fact we will. I have spoken to other cities and other companies that use this, and, I mean, it monitors everything, maintenance. So we'll say gas, we'll, we'll save on the maintenance, on, on the maintenance side of things, but you'll see productivity and accountability there as well. And then it also is going to work in Dean's favor, because he can pull up and see where his guys are, especially if he, if some issues that come up, he can say, hey, this is what they were doing. Again, you know, after three years, maybe, maybe we, we don't need it, but honestly, I think it's something that we do need in the city right now. And I, I put the city, the city car as well, because they have trainings that they go to, and they use that vehicle, and plus you get a discount if it's six cars versus five, you get a really big discount. So why not have it on all of our vehicles? The police department already has it on theirs, and it shows the speed limit and everything, just like this one's going to be. And I believe my fellow council members, they, the packets in your book.
You did say if we want GPS, that you wouldn't have a problem with this driving vehicles home?
Correct, I did say that, and, and the, and we talked about this, because now, if we get a call from a citizen saying, hey, this vehicle was seen in Hillsborough on this time, you can say, no, it was not. Here you go. Here's the proof. So, and I, I think that's going to kind of control that issue as well. And I'm not saying it is, or it isn't being done, but I, I'm hearing complaints that it is. So, if it is being done, this is going to help manage it.
I make a motion that we approve item N, the Teltrac GPS systems for the public work vehicles and the city car.
I have a motion by Mr. Cochran to make approval to purchase the GPS system.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Farmer, all in favor? Any nans? Item N, discuss considering necessary regarding purchase order procedure passed by city council.
Yeah, I, I put that on there. Again, this is policy and procedures, and we've already discussed this. I, I think we just, I need to go ahead and go back and put the whole policy and procedure book on the agenda, because I think the whole thing needs redone. And, and actually, I would like a work session, workshop, to go over the policy and procedures.
Can, can we make a, a motion to, I know right now it reads, I didn't mean to cut you off, but right now it reads that for all purchasers, it doesn't have any exclusions for emergencies or any other thing. Is that something that we can put, can we amend with this item N? Can we amend our policy with this? Because it's, it specifically states necessary action regarding purchase order procedures. So can, we can amend it through this? Okay, I just want to make sure.
I would have to do an amendment to, to, to that, but I could get that and try to have it for the next council meeting.
What, simply you want to put on there?
For like emergency, sir, like we were saying earlier, like if you have a, a water blowout that, you know, and the place is open on Saturday, and we're, we're closed here, you won't be held liable by the council when it says all purchasers. Just do what I mean, it'll protect you, and, I mean, because basically, I know it's a mercy, like we talked about earlier, you've got to take care of these citizens, and that, that comes first. And, but then, when you come in on Monday morning, and somebody's going, well, you violated the policy, you know, it just protects you and stuff. So we can't amend it right now, or it's got to be?
We can make a, a vote to amend it.
Okay.
But then we would have to do an amendment, we'd have to do amended resolution, we'd have to amend it by resolution. You can decide to do the amendment, but it has to pass next, next month.
Okay.
And if we're going to go through all that paperwork and all, all those steps, we, we just need to do the whole...
Right. Oh, I agree, we got to go back through, but I was saying, just for tonight, because in, in case something does happen this weekend, I'd like, or, or tomorrow, or, you know, middle of the night.
I mean, I, I...
I agree, we need to go...
I don't think one month is probably going to kill us, because, I mean...
I, 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 we, we need to go ahead and try to schedule work to go, go through this. I'd like to get everybody a copy, that way they can go home and highlight areas of concern prior to the workshop. You understand what I'm saying? So we're not just all going through it line by line.
Yes.
We can all hit the highlights of what, what we think.
And, and I would like the department heads to be involved in this process, for sure. That way, we all understand what we're changing and what we're talking about. That way, no one can say, hey, we didn't know.
Where do you want to set that workshop?
Probably just check with Mr. Hawke, when Mr. Hawke is back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, get with us all on a date, and just make sure, you know, can, can do that.
I'll get with him tomorrow.
But as far as, as far as, I don't think, we need to take any action on that right now.
Well, I still say, I don't know, I'm just saying, just protect Dean, because it, like I said, it specifically says that.
I understand what Paul's saying, because it happened a week ago, I love this last week.
Yeah, and, and basically, and he is...
I agree.
Yeah, I don't, I make a motion that we, we amend the, the, where it says in the, in the personnel policy that says all purchase orders to have an exclusion for emergency situations with notification of, I'll throw that out there, you know, of the department, well, it would be the department head, but maybe the city administrator, maybe the mayor, what, I mean...
Days on?
Days on?
Your department will lay it on?
Yeah.
I didn't know about like this.
Can we make that part of the motion?
I don't even, I don't even think you would have to make a motion, as long as Dean calls you, I think it'd be fine.
I understand that, but...
But it's still in the...
He's still violating the AI, regardless if he calls me or not, he's still violating the policy and procedure, man.
You're right.
See, you know what I mean? And I assume we need to go through the rest of that, I'm trying, not trying to subvert any of that, I'm just trying to say that for him, for, while we got it on the agenda...
I think that you can make a motion to give him the ability to make a purchase in the case of, you know, a weekend or not coming.
It was, it was always, it was always a, like a verbal statement, that, you know, hey, if you got an emergency, you will go buy stuff. And, and we kind of all understood that, but if you go back and read the personnel manual, he's in violation of it, regardless. I mean, you know, it's semantics, but these guys need to be protected.
And also it says a hundred dollars, and what, can you buy today?
Oh, I know.
A hundred dollars, I mean, it's ridiculous.
And then we need to visit that and say, you know...
That's what we need to...
Two hundred or, or, yeah, I don't know. Anyway.
Okay, so we've got a motion for emergencies, emergencies, and to notify the department head.
The liaison, yes, correct.
Okay.
With specific times, right?
Oh, and, yeah, probably...
Specific timeframes.
Times and, and, and amounts, maybe, or something, you know, the situation and, and amounts, I don't, you know...
I'll second that motion. Okay, I've got a second by Mr. Richards, any further discussion? All in favor? Any nans? Alright, O is discuss and consider necessary actions regarding holding city council meetings on the second and fourth Monday of every month.
Yeah, I, again, I put this on there. So each month, we, we have these long council meetings with issues, accountability issues that, that keeps coming up. Few things that this has happened, this, this will give us more time with the employees to hold people accountable or approve things that come up, and it will shorten our meetings. I'm not saying that I don't like being here five hours once a month, but this is going to give us, since there's not a chief every day, then this is going to help us twice a month to kind of be involved and approve things, and it will shorten up the agenda.
You make that in a motion?
I actually do need to, on this, Ms. Bell approached me about the EDC going to, I think, the first Monday. So I want to try to see if we can arrange that where they keep their original, their original date, which is, do you know when the EDC meets?
The fourth Mon- Monday.
It is the fourth Monday, so maybe we do the fourth Tuesday then, or...
Okay, again, this one, this one definitely has to be done by amendment.
Right.
And so it would take effect until after the amendment was approved.
Right.
And then on the EDC, the city can make a recommendation to the EDC, but they can't, you know...
I have to have some discussion on this, on this, on the, on the, the second and the fourth Monday. Sometimes we don't have it that much, and, I mean, do, do we have to have a meeting on both, both, on both, you know, because sometimes, I think that's any time we didn't have enough of one meeting. Of course, not very lately, but I've seen times, you know, we have twenty, thirty minutes meetings. I mean, is it, can't we have a meeting? Can we say, yeah, we approved for first and second, whatever, Monday, having a meeting? But if we don't have anything on that meeting, we don't should not have to meet.
Well, I mean, it gives us the opportunity to look over the expenses and approve the expenses, and, and it might only be where we come in and approve expenses. But at least it allows us to look at expenses, look, look at everything, and prove it, then we might be out, but this is going to give us more time with the city and to hold people more accountable. Because right now, we're, we're, we're only holding people accountable once a month. And since we don't have a chief every day, I, I, I think it's needed.
Okay, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure if we can do that tonight, because it has to be done by resolution, because the personnel, personnel books are done by resolution, so it really, it has to be done by resolution.
Well, I don't think the personnel, I, I think we, because, I talked to TML.
Oh, she did?
Yeah. TML said it would, all we'd have to do is just change the resolution. So if we, we could probably get the resolution going and then bring it up and pass it.
Yeah, like I said, it would have to be passed next month, the, by resolution, if that, which I've decided to do that, to, to do the amendment, but...
Now, knowing what Ms. Bell mentioned to me, and I know I put it on here as the, the second and fourth, but could we do the second Monday and maybe the fourth Tuesday of the month? That way, EDC, because she's involved with the school board, and she sits on the EDC as well. So I don't want to make it where she's going to have to give up one of those, those spots.
Is that a motion?
So, yeah, well, I'm asking if I can, I'm asking if I can do that.
Well, why not first and third?
Because what was going on for school board? School board is, school board is on the third, I believe. EDC was on the fourth. So with all that going on, I didn't, I don't want to ask her to, hey, you're going to have to step down because of us, I want to make everything work.
She said she was going, she was going to school board meeting now.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that would be, that would be good.
So, I mean, if I can, I'd like to make a motion that we still meet on the second Monday and then the fourth Tuesday of every month.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, well, I mean, we can't, we still can vote on it, you still got to...
Well, we can vote to take action, to make a resolution.
To change the resolution.
To change the resolution.
Then the resolution will come back to us.
And then we'll have to vote on that.
Correct. It's kind of putting the...
Yeah, I think, I think you could just, as a, as a council person, just go to her and say, hey, I'd like to, put this resolution on the agenda. We can't, yeah, we can't, we can't hold on it. I think it's, if you want to see something like that happen, then I, I would just do it as an agenda request and put it on there and then bring it to the council for a final vote.
Right, Terry, can you have that vote on?
Alright, then I'll make a motion that we take no action on, I don't know.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Cochran to take no action on O, that's second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Second by Mr. Farmer, I'm sorry. If no more discussion, all in favor? Okay. Well...
And we can go ahead and...
Yeah. I make a motion, yeah.
Take no action on... Take no action on P?
Take no action on P.
You got, uh.
Also, hold on a second.
Let me, let me read, discuss and consider necessary action regarding recommending EDC to move monthly meetings to the first Monday of each month, so that's what it is.
And, and, uh, Q.
Saying what?
Take no action on, uh, P and Q.
Okay, so Q is, uh, discuss, yeah, consider necessary action regarding. Leaving all public works vehicles parked at the, uh, water barn, went on, went on call, including employees that live in the city. So P and Q, I have a motion by Mr. Cockham to take no action. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And a second by Mr. Farmer. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimous. R discuss, consider necessary action, uh, actions regarding the approval, uh, of a work policy for all employees regarding, uh, ineligible expenditures.
Like, ineligible, is that?
Yeah, about like the get ready, um, flowers, uh, so forth.
Ineligible means not.
Yeah.
Not, uh, court of law policy.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
I thought we did that.
And Terry, uh.
Discussing.
Well, Terry put this, uh, in our, in our pocket.
That from Ed.
No, he did look over it.
Yeah.
He did look over it. Because this was made as a statement at the last city council meeting, it wasn't made as vote. So when I put together this work agreement, which turned out that it needed to be changed to work policy instead of work agreement. And I put that on the thing that.
Yeah, I, I do have a question about that because when, I, I talked to some attorneys at TML. Um, and when you put work policy, this is a definite course of action, um, which should be set in our personnel policies. A work agreement lands expectations to the employee.
Right, but Ed said that he is, um, city situations, he strides away from agreement. Because that is the same basically as a contract.
What if, what if you put?
If it's a policy change or a policy, then.
What if you put a, uh, acknowledgement of policy?
Work acknowledgement.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, acknowledgement of, of policy and basically says that everybody goes back and says, here's our policy, here's what, you know. Basically, I know they should have read it and they probably have, you have a form that says, I acknowledge, I've read the thing, but this just goes back and says, hey, um, this is.
Well, what just, what this says right now is that we can't make any expenditures, blah, blah, blah.
Correct, which is part of what a policy states, correct?
Um, no, I mean, we don't have a what you can, you can't spend in policy in our personnel policies.
And, and the word policy should be out of the question on this, um, due to the, I mean, the definition of it. Uh, cause this isn't, I mean, it's not a policy right now. Why can't you put it in the policy? I mean, you gotta redo the handbook, just put it in there, that way it's set in stone.
If you're saying you can't do this, that is set in a policy.
I, no, I'm, I'm saying not use the word policy. We need to use like acknowledgement or something, cause we're landing expectations to the employees. We're not, we're, we're not making a policy right now, cause it's not in our policy handbook.
I don't know, I got in trouble for the word acknowledgement on the last one that I did, so I'm kind of.
I mean, and, and I, I, I spent hours on the phone with TML about this.
I don't, I don't ca- I don't care what you call it.
And, well, no, and I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to kinda give you where I came up with the agreement, because TML, or the lawyers that are free were saying agreement. Do a work agreement like I even mentioned to them, and they said, that's a lot better than work policy. And then they gave me the, the reasons why. Um, Ed is. Is this only be, uh, until y'all change the policy, or till y'all go back through and do your work? No, this, this is basically just gonna allow you guys to know that this is not gonna happen anymore. That, that's all it is, is it's gonna cover us as a city.
But we already signed that last week.
I understand, but we need things in writing. With, that way nobody knows it's black and white, everybody knows about it. Um, but again, going back to TML, I, I, I think it needs to be work agreement and this is just coming from the TML lawyers.
Sure, sure.
Did y'all get a, got the memo, maybe, since there, there's no law against doing what we're doing?
I do.
So he said there was no case law out.
Well, I, I mean, I'm. And also said the attorney general ruled on it that that was for, uh, employee morale improvement also. Basically, what I, what I'm saying is, all this that we had last month saying we were violating the law, we were not violating the law. Now then, if the citizens don't want us to do it, is it okay, then we won't, okay? So I don't care how we work it up, let's.
Where the work policy.
I'm not talking to you, it's still a court, I'm just saying.
Sure, no, I mean, and, and again, you know, I, I think we're getting, you know, there, there's different stories and, and, and again, if Ed was here, I would probably tell him this too. Because I think you talked to TML, I talked to TML, and they said, in certain aspects of it, you can purchase things for morale boosters or for morale. But when I told them what we were spending, they laughed at us and said, no. Um, because we don't have line, I mean, we've got employee development. It, it actually probably needs to be actual line item.
Okay, I wouldn't wanna call this, it, I mean, we're just, we're going around in circles.
Yeah, I mean, per TML, I would, I would say we'd do like a work agreement or a work acknowledgement. And it's up to you guys.
Why don't we do it with, if the citizens don't want to do it, just don't do it?
We need to put it in writing.
I'm, I'm, that's what I'm saying though, if we can put it in writing, but the citizens don't want it, fine. You know, that's what I'm saying. It'd be writing.
Okay.
I have, would.
I'll, I'll just, I'll make a motion to, to make this a work agreement. And that have all employees sign it.
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a first by Mr. Farmer, uh, to title it work agreement, uh, second by Mr. Cockham. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, passes unanimous. Uh, we'll go on to S, discuss and consider necessary actions regarding, um, producing a city Italy brochure and having a joint. Meeting with the Italy Independent School District and local realtors to promote it.
I, I got a call from, um, Mr. Barasta, and then he did come down and talk to me and the mayor, uh, seven months ago. Uh, wanting the city to do a brochure, and I'm guessing with the independent school district, but us have a joint meeting with the realtors. The local realtors, because he felt that the local realtors were giving the city a bad rap. So he wanted to promote, you know, get us on the same page and maybe have some kind of a. Luncheon for the local realtors and, and pass out these, the brochures and get them, you know, get the word out that the city's growing, we're making changes. You know, that type of thing, but.
Did he give a date of when he wanted to do that?
He's been wanting to do this for quite some time. I have not had time, I, I don't have time to sit down and put a brochure together.
Oh, they're wanting, oh, they want us to put it all together?
They're wanting the city to put one together and them to put one together, from one end to the other.
They gave us one a couple of meetings ago, when he came in, he gave us the brochure, something that they had put, had together.
One is one is so that we can give that to the realtors, you know, so that they can give that to their customers instead of having a negative, um.
Yeah. Cause Encore don't do the, they used to do that for us, they would put the, Encore, TXU would do that, would do, uh. Didn't they, Jimmy? Didn't they, one time, they did that?
I can't remember.
I think so, but they would.
Oh, really?
Usually your chamber would do something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that something we expend hotel, motel tax funds for?
If you give up the head and, 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 and beds. Shouldn't they, didn't?
I don't think so.
What?
Cause it doesn't put, it, heads and beds means bringing, um, tourists to, right, well, this isn't.
That is by your tourism, if you, if you advertise in your city.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you, if you put in there that.
You could probably advertise your events if you did, then you might, we could.
If it's an advertisement, but, I mean, if you're doing it as a, this is what our city has to offer and this is, you know. School district and this is, you know, blah, 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 that's not really advertising for tourism to come to town. That's saying, this is what we have to offer you to come and, if you choose this to live, that's not it.
Why wouldn't economic development do it? EDC, why wouldn't they possess the other?
Is that, do you know if that's on the agenda?
It is on the agenda.
For them to participate.
Discuss?
Yeah.
To discuss.
I would, I would, I would like to, to meet with the master, I mean.
The EDC would, could, could do it easier than, I mean, I'm not saying easier, but they would.
And make more.
We would have to go through hoops to make sure that we fell in line of hotel motel, if you understand what I mean, on that.
Can I ask you a question? Why aren't the cities putting the signs, welcome to cities, and the, and the hotel, motel paying for it, if that's not advertising?
So it wasn't, yeah.
Are you talking about the billboards and the?
Welcome to Corsicana, welcome to Ennis.
Are you talking about the, the concrete things out there? I don't know, I've just been told that hotel motel can only be used if it puts heads in the.
Promotes your town, my understanding, promotes tourism in your town.
So I, I mean, I can find out for sure if that would qualify.
Get the money paid for the launchings, cause, when you're doing it.
Yeah, Jimmy, I think we, uh, we did that once with EDC, with money for the EDC, and then they told us that we couldn't do it anymore. We put those signs out there that said, welcome, needed by Chamber, Chamber of Metal and, and, and by Milford. And they told us we couldn't use that money for that anymore.
Hotel, hotel money?
Yeah, well, Milford Shane was here, and they told us, no, y'all can't use it, you can, y'all can't use it for that. But we did, we did at that time, but they, you know, we, I didn't know, you know, so.
I think it'd be something fairly easy, we could probably pull it up to see exactly what can be spent under that tax by, by that law, that guideline, to see if it would be.
The biggest problem is getting the brochure put together, getting it, the input that. And we used to meet with the school board once or twice a year with the city council.
Once a year.
Once a year and discuss the problems that the city and the schools had and, and the projections and so forth.
You know, I'm all about getting some.
Oh, yeah, most definitely, and we, and we, we can meet with them and find out our limitations at the same time and kinda give them, yeah, we can spend this amount of money, but it's gotta be in this direction or something like that. And can we have a joint meeting between the EDC, the school board and the city council? Is that possible? I mean, they've got it on their agenda, have a, a meeting.
The last meeting we had, the city, the city had it and we paid for the dinner. We don't have, we can't, we can't pay for their dinner anymore, and they, they said, bring your own lunch.
That ain't the end of the world.
Huh?
It's not the end of the world, Frankie.
What's not?
That you can't buy lunches?
No, I'm just saying we paid for it last time.
You're making the point to bring that up.
No, but, but it's a point, that, that we need to, to have out, that, you know, we can do it during the afternoon, whatever the case may be, but, you know.
What they've normally done is the school paid for it one time, the city paid for it one time. It was not elaborate, it was sandwiches.
Exactly.
It was sandwiches and chips. It was for not one individual, but for a group of people. And I don't think the citizens complained about promoting the city. I think they complained about one or two small things. But to promote the city and you spend a hundred dollars for Subway sandwiches out here, I don't think the city's gonna raise cane about that.
And I can, you know what, we can make an amendment to this motion right here, specifically in, uh, um, state that, um, we wanna make a, a meeting with the Italy Independent Schools. So I'm making a motion, by the way, um, make a meeting with the Italy Independent School District and local realtors and, um, pay for, um, a lunch. With no more than two hundred dollars.
Does that got a motion?
Yeah, that's.
Well, there's probably the school, the district, we probably split it with.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and, and that's, I mean, like I said, if it's not a hundred dollars, like I said, Subway, it's not gonna be that much.
True.
You know, finger food and.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, if it's something like, and.
It's the abuse.
This is gonna help promote our city and get there and, and, and get the realtors in there and everything, that's, that's money well spent. That's money well spent, I think, so.
And do we wanna have the, the realtors, the school district, the city and the EDC at the same?
Have the EDC there, because, um, I mean, if you say that, that we not, might not have time, I'm hoping that someone on the EDC, um, will pick up the pace. And maybe help us out, you know, with that.
Put together a brochure is a pretty, uh, serious thing. I mean, it's not, it's not like you just sit down and put one together real quick and then we all grand fun.
But at least we can, we can kinda, um, compile what we want to, to put on it and then decide who's gonna do it maybe at that meeting. Um, and we can put it on the agenda like that, maybe decide if that, you know, we wanna, uh, let the school do it and we'll give them the information or, you know.
And where do we wanna have the meeting, at the school district or at the, uh?
That, that's up to.
That's, well, did, did, you know, tell them that we wanna have a meeting? And that's the sound of the line of the.
Probably, yeah, and, I don't know, they could make that decision. If they wanna have it at the school, we can have it down there, or we can have it down there. It's, it's not, I don't care, either way. Um, they've got more parking at the school, I mean, it wouldn't matter, so. But like I said, we don't have to set, um, we're gonna have it here or have there, I mean, we'll have to post for it, of course, but let's just go ahead and say we're gonna have a meeting.
Yep, I've got a motion to have a meeting with the school board, EDC, uh, have a, some lunch, form of luncheon, not to expend for, no more than two hundred dollars. Uh, at a location to be determined, uh, later. And I got a second by Mr. Farmer. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, eight, um, council member comments. Frank, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Mr. Farmer?
I just wanna say thank you guys for coming up and, uh, supporting us and the decisions that we're having to make. Um, we're making some strides, so hang in there, uh, we're, we're trying to hang in there, but thank you guys.
Uh, thank y'all for being here. Um, I've got a copy of this, um, I don't know if, um, if anybody wants to take a look at it or, or anything, I probably want it back. But, uh, I just wanted to let you know that we've, I've got the, um, the audit, um, right here.
It's also posted on our website.
Is it really? Awesome, awesome, even better. Um, but, uh, thank y'all for being here, thank Dean and all the department heads that are here, that's it.
Correct.
I'd like to thank Dean for working short handed and injured and, I know it's been tough on you. And that y'all doing the best you can do, and that's all we can ask, same with you. Good reports, every month, crimes down, we appreciate that, and Terry and the ladies did a great job, so we appreciate everything out there.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Um, y'all bring prayer, um, mayor had to leave, um, Ms. Joyce is, is not feeling well, so he had to leave for that, so, you know.
Uh, thanks for everybody coming out and, and giving us your opinions and we'll, uh, do it again next month. Meetings adjourned.